Wow, this is on cue. It turns seven o'clock and everyone just quiets down. Wonderful. Well, good evening. Pardon me?
7:01.
Oh, 7:01.
Yeah.
That's okay.
They're waiting.
It's Christmas, a minute late. Welcome, everyone, to our city council meeting. And at this time, I'd like to call five pastors. Instead of having one tonight, we have five. And Pastor Ron is going to deliver the invocation, backed up by four other pastors. So if you want to throw in a little rain prayer in there, that's okay, too.
Lord, we thank you that you are the reason for this season. We're thankful that it's Christmas more than the holidays. Lord, tonight our hearts are touched with a cry for safety. The angels said peace on earth. And Lord, you know we are seeing anything but peace. We can't help but pray for those that are so affected, families of those killed and wounded in San Bernardino. Lord, we pray for the protection of every law enforcement officer. We pray, Lord, for righteousness and justice. And we pray, Lord, for peace somehow, at this Christmas season. May we come to know the Prince of Peace. We also pray, Lord, for rain. Rain in this city, rain in this state, water for our earth, water for our crops. We ask that you would send us rain. Lord, now we ask that each of our city officials would be strengthened, protected, blessed, given wisdom. And God, we pray this in the name of your Son, for whom this season is named, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of December 2, 2015. And Commander Haddon, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to give a special thanks to Rosemary Sutro and Sarah Orozco for the beautiful decorations this evening. Again, thank you to both of you, if you're listening. Also, we named our employee of the year tonight, and it was Sergeant Jesse Seha. And congratulations to Jesse. Jesse had to leave as his wife is in school, and he rushed off with her tonight. So again, congratulations, Jesse. All right, let's go on to item three. Roll call. Director Maloney?
Here.
Lewis.
Yeah.
Silvera.
Here.
Stonebrough.
Volta.
Here. We have a quorum. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silvera, second by Freya to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Carried. Presentation, certificate of recognition to various local churches for the October 31, 2015 events. And if you didn't attend as a young adult, a child, or a parent, you missed something. Because this is a safe environment for an alternative to Halloween, and it's called their harvest of fun. There were two events going on in town, and both were packed. And I can't thank the churches enough for what they've done. Tonight, we have five of the pastors here this evening. I will name the churches that are not present, and present the certificates to the ones that are present here this evening. So pastors, if you could come forward, please. Thank you. And again, this is a... Don't want to see your faces. Again, every year, for how many years, Steve?
Twelve.
The 12th year that the churches have banded together and provided a safe environment for kids as an alternative to trick-or-treating. It is totally paid for by the churches, totally funded by the churches. And the assistance that they receive is then, the good blessings are then transferred to the kids of our town with activities and just loads of fun at two locations this year. And one was at the Plaza, and one was at New Beginnings Church. So I just can't thank you enough for what you do. This is the true spirit of Christmas. This is the true spirit of, I guess, what religions were meant to be, and that's to be a giving society, a giving community, and a giving parish. And again, on behalf of the city council, I can't thank you enough for what you've done. So at this time, I'd like to present the certificates to the pastors that are here this evening. And they are Bethel
St.
Thank you. We have New Beginnings. Vision for Major?
Oh, right here.
And Valley Christian Center. Thank you so much. Oh, let me get this way. Valley Christian, here we go. Now, let me announce the other churches. We have the Star of David Church that participated, United Methodist, Seventh Day Adventists, First Baptists, Praise Fellowship International, Mercy Springs Church of the Nazarene, Word of Life, and the Salvation Army. And Pastor Steve, if I could entrust you with these, to give them to the pastors that couldn't be here this evening. And again, if this event, God willing, will happen again next year, in fact, I know it will. And so if you'd like to, in any way, shape, perform, be a supporter of this event, either to come out and volunteer, or be a supporter of funds, I'm sure the churches would greatly appreciate it. But again, thank you for providing a safe, safe atmosphere. And God bless all of you. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. Now, I'd remind you, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Nunes, a lifelong resident of Los Banos. And I'm here tonight representing a nonprofit organization called JustServe.org. JustServe.org is a web-based organization that allows any nonprofit organization, any church, any municipality, any school district, to post any project or event that they may have, that they want to get out to the community and look for volunteers. It's also a website where the general public or the community can go to and look for opportunities to volunteer time to different organizations. I actually have a 27-minute, or 20, yeah, 27-minute PowerPoint presentation, if anybody would like to have me come and present this at their organization. Some of the examples of the people that are currently using the website that I represent is American Cancer Society, Roads to Recovery, Drives, and this is out of Modesto. And what takes place here is they post on their, on the website, JustServe.org, that at this specific time, at this, at this day, they need drivers. And so then they have a phone number and a contact person. You can call that person, and you can volunteer to help that organization. I know of one person currently in the community that drives to Watsonville every Thursday. And she goes to an organization called Loaves and Fishes. And this is an organization that feeds the homeless. And this is obviously posted on the website for an entire year, tells you how many volunteers they're looking for, and what their needs are. And if you want to be able to, if you want to volunteer, you can go on, put your name in, they can, you can contact that organization and see how you're available. The website is absolutely free. It's open to anybody to use. Like I said, that's a nonprofit organization. The only thing that our organization currently asks is that we're not a place for a political, I want to say, a political event to take place or advertise. This is just specifically for people to be able to volunteer for nonprofit organizations, or nonprofit organizations to, you know, present their opportunity. I understand that the chief of police, I just learned, has a food drive. This would be a perfect opportunity to have him post this on the food drive. And what is his needs? What is he looking for? And when can we, where can we deliver it? I don't know any of those things, but I just happened to hear that he has a food drive going on. Well, this would be able to get it out to basically anybody that wanted to look on the website. Like I said, I have an opportunity that I can come to any organization and present the PowerPoint if they want more information. I have business cards just with my name, JustServe.org, and my phone number. And I thank you very much.
Can you please leave business cards with our, oh, God, you just escaped me. City, city clerk?
Sure.
Glad to. And then we can contact you. Now, would this also be for, say, like Habitat for Humanity, if they wanted to do construction?
Definitely.
People who wanted to do that, they could, Habitat could post, and then people could sign up to be workers, or carpenters, or whatever?
Definitely. I don't know how much time I have. Like I said, I'm trying to condense as much time, but just a few different organizations that are currently on the website, Catholic Charities of Merced, Applegate Zoo Gift Shop, Red Cross of Gilroy, the Salvation Army of San Jose, the City of La Mesa, Habitat Humanity of La Mesa, East Bay Regional Park District, the City of Pittsburgh, Parks and Recreation Department, Brentwood Community Chests. These are just a few that are around the area that are already on the website.
Okay. If you would leave us some business cards, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Glad to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Greg Hostetler, Los Banos, California. I spoke some time back here about improving the quality of life in Los Banos and the appearance. And we're still on that agenda. And I'm here tonight just to let the council know that I like what came out of some of the council meetings in the past, and more directly talking about the upcoming annexation, or potential annexation of land on the east side of town, which we've been working on for a number of years. And those have been addressed, I think, fairly well. And I think Jeff Roberts will elaborate more on that because that's a separate agenda item. But really, what I want to ask the council, and the staff, also, if staff members have ideas, and the council have ideas, because along with our company, the company that Jeff Robert works for, Granville Homes, and the Seamy family in Fresno, have a substantial investment in the community. And we'd like to have a little more input on a go-forward basis from your ideas, because the investments that we have here. And it's worked out fairly well. And we think the economy, for sure, is on its move back, and that there are interactions between our company and the city and the staff, that we can improve things now, because the opportunity is here now with the Granville group. And our, let's say, opportunities have enhanced with, because we also are farmers and almond growers and pistachio growers. So I think we're a little better equipped than we might have been in some years back. So with the community needing more jobs and to move forward, I think the timing is really good. We have some of the best interest rates and opportunity to create jobs in our community. So I'm just here to let you know, the door is open. We really want to make things happen and help this city move forward, not only just what we've been doing in cleaning up interest to the town that I talked about before, but now also helping maybe what we call some of the infill, because we're also buying lots in town, and we're trying to find the odd lots to do, all the infill we can do. I was born in Merced County, and I really like this, this community. And the Seamy group is proud to be. They've been here over 10 years invested, and they'd like to move forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Michelle Paradiso, and I'm from Los Banos. The Parks and Recreation Division would like to invite you and the Los Banos community to Breakfast with Santa, which will be Saturday, December 5, from 8:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. at the community center.
Thank you.
Tickets are on sale right now at the community center for $7. And they will be $10 at the door on Saturday morning. And we'll be serving ham, eggs, pancakes, coffee, and orange juice. There will also be activities such as arts and crafts for the kids. They'll also be able to write letters to Santa, and there'll be photos with Santa for $7 each. We'd like to see everybody come out. And it's a great holiday event each year, not only for everybody, but especially for the kids. We hope to see you all there. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays.
Can we serve again?
Can we what?
Can we serve food again?
Oh, yes. Please.
Okay, yes.
Well, I'll see you one day, okay? And I hope to see you one day at breakfast. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas, San Diego. And thank you to the Recreation Department for putting that event on. How many years has this been now?
A lot of years.
A lot of years. Okay, we'll go with...
I'm hoping they work to progress it for you now.
Okay, we'll go with a lot of years. All right, a long time. Community, please pass on the information. Breakfast with Santa is a wonderful event. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
I'll give Santa a chance to laugh. Ho, 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 and then you can talk. Okay.
Hello and Merry Christmas from the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, Bertha Freya, Los Banos resident. The hustle and bustle of the holiday season is upon us, and there's plenty happening in our community to get you in the holiday spirit. On Thursday, Espanyol's will host their annual Christmas boutique from 4:00 to 8:30, featuring local vendors and artists with amazing products. Or you can stroll downtown with our Los Banos Downtown Association as they hold their Christmas evening downtown. Enjoy an evening of shopping, food, and fun from 5:30 to 9 p.m. Then on Friday, join your Los Banos Chamber of Commerce as we present our annual Christmas parade. This year's theme is a Sesame Street Christmas, and we have over 60 entries to entertain you, as well as a forecast for no rain this year. Santa will arrive on a vehicle from our sponsor, Republic Services. And following the parade, we will gather in Henry Miller Plaza for the award ceremony, the lighting of the community Christmas tree, and caroling from Los Banos Junior High and High School. On Saturday, besides the Breakfast with Santa, after Breakfast with Santa, the Los Banos Arts Council will present their annual Makers Market, beginning at 10 a.m. at the Ted Filasco Art Center. And Santa will visit from noon to 2. Come and enjoy food, drink, music, and merriment, along with free admission. Check our community calendar at losbanos.com for more updates and events for the month of December.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and those in attendance tonight and watching at home. I'm Jim Valentine, resident of Los Banos. Once again, I bring you a Christmas invitation from the Kiwanis Club of Los Banos. Don't spend Christmas alone. Come join your friends and neighbors at the 32nd Annual Christmas Eve Dinner at Fire Station Number One, 333 Seventh Street, which is the corner of Seventh and C. Dinner will be served on December 24 from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. We will have our traditional barbecue chicken, pasta, salad, roll, pie, and beverage. Santa will visit from 12 until 1 p.m. The dinner is free to all, thanks to many generous individuals, organizations, and businesses from our community. I'd like to ask Commander Haddon to alert our police officers that are on duty that morning. If they see anyone that could use a hot meal, send them over to the fire station. Deliveries will also be available to those otherwise are unable to come to the fire station. They can call me at 769-6703. I want to publicly thank the city, especially Fire Chief Marison, for the use of the fire station for this event. Without the cosponsorship of the fire department, the success of this event would not be possible. City Manager Kerrigan, with your permission, flyers in both English and Spanish will be available in the lobby here at City Hall for those needing more information. And my number is also on the flyer. Anyone who would like to volunteer their labor on the 24th can just show up that day around 10 a.m. Those wishing to contribute funds toward the event can mail the donations to the Kiwanis Club at PO Box 380, Los Banos. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to one and all.
Thank you for that continued event, too. It's wonderful. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to public forum?
Eric Limon, resident of Los Banos, employee of Republic Services. Just want to quickly remind our residents that we will be behind, a day behind the service for Christmas, the 25th, which is a Friday, and we'll resume service on Saturday. I also wanted to just quickly say two more things outside of work. I just want to thank our police department. We don't know how lucky we are to have such a great, you know, amount of officers that, you know, we do take them for granted often. And, you know, I see more of a rapport within the community, you know. I just want to remind residents, too, just, you know, not necessarily for your behalf, but, you know, they're here to protect us, you know. We shouldn't be afraid of them and we should not, you know, think anything, you know, any negative thoughts. So second, thirdly, I want to talk about the Rotary, the feed that we did, Empty Bowls. Great turnout. It was such a great thing. And people that are not familiar with Empty Bowls, it's a program to help feed hunger and it was a great turnout. So I'm a member of the Rotary, so I just felt compelled to say that in front of you guys. So thank you. Happy holidays.
The aim of Empty Bowls is to have a bowl of soup and go away hungry. Well, I can tell you, the third year of the event, no one goes away hungry. Everyone eats as much soup as they want and it was just a fantastic event. It was crowded last night and Rotary Club did a spectacular job. And all of the money goes to different org, am I right? Yeah. All of the money raised goes to different charitable organizations through the Rotary. And this was all started by a teacher, James Clark, at Los Banos Junior High School, who had this idea, conceptual idea, and then the Rotary brought it forward. And I can tell you, no one goes away hungry. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Steve Hammond, Bethel Community Church. Just want to let everybody know the event we have coming up on December 13th. It's a Sunday night, 6:00 p.m. We'll be hosting a concert with the California Melody Boys. It's a Southern Gospel Trio and a little bit partial to it. My cousin sings with them. And so it's a free event. We'd like to invite the community out and I will make sure, because again, my cousin sings with them, that they will be singing some Christmas music and we'll have a great time together. Free event, like I said, free will often will be received that night, but we'd like to invite everyone out to see the California Melody Boys. And thank you to the Rotary Club. You're very generous with the Empty Bowl program every year with us and Salvation Army, and we really appreciate your help. We, our food pantry is just blowing up this year. We're on track to feed 30,000 people this year with our food pantry out of our church. And so the need is great. We appreciate all the support and help and collaboration we get throughout our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and we will go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have Director Maloney.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 156620 through 146832 and the amount of $839,055.20. Minutes for the October 7th, 2015 city council meeting. Minutes for the November 4th, 2015 city council meeting. Minutes for the November 18th, 2015 city council meeting. Development impact fees report for fiscal years 2011 through 2013, AB 1600. City Council Resolution Number 5712, accepting public improvements for Villages 3 Phase 1 at Stone Creek and Villages 3 Phase 2 at Stone Creek. City Council Resolution Number 5713, authorizing the use of the National Joint Powers Alliance procurement contract with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Ranchwood Park. And I think I mistakenly read off the wrong warrant numbers at the beginning, and I think it should be 156620 through 156832, and the amount is still correct.
So it's not 146?
It's not 146832, it's 156832.
156832. You note that, correction, council members. And is there any council member who would like to remove an agenda item for discussion out of the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Silveira?
I'll second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Silveira to accept the consent agenda as stated with the correction of the warrants. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Let's go on to public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And before we start, we have our city attorney who has our conflict of interest, and he will be joining us after this agenda item. To receive public comment and consideration of annexation number 2014-01, pre-zone 2014-02 and pre-annexation development agreement and associated mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2015061056 for Presidential Estates East Plan, Area Plan and Annexation of approximately 106 acres of unincorporated lands lying between, lying north of Pioneer Road, west of Mercy Springs Road, SR 165 and east of 11th Street, APNs 026-090-001, 002, 003, 004, 005, 083-120-012, 013, 014, 015, 016, 017, 018, 019, 020, 021, 022, 023, 024 and 028. Glad I learned how to count. Okay. Now, let's go to the city council resolution numbers 5704, approving mitigated negative declaration. Ordinance number 1139, amending the zoning map to pre-zone approximately 106 acres. Ordinance number 1140, approving pre-annexation development agreement. Ordinance number 1141, approving the pre-annexation development agreement. And number five, city council resolution number 5705, requesting the annexation and pre-zone. And let's go to a staff report and we'll go to welcome back Director or Senior Planner, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's good to be back. So in light of the October 7th city council meeting and based on the discussion with city council there between staff and the applicant, staff with the applicant came back, had some discussions, and the applicant, Jeff Roberts, and Mr. Greg Hostetler went to meet with Lafco based on a letter that the city did receive from the local agency formation commission, went back, spoke to them and created a solution to move forward based on the discussion there. We will be revising our environmental document and we'll be preparing a supplemental EIR based on their comment letter. And this will be, the supplemental EIR will still be tiered off of our general plan, but it will get in deeper into the ag and ag preservation and so that issue there. So staff is currently working on that. Also, based on those comments and discussion from city council on October 7th, the applicant went back to the Cardoza family, sat down with them, and in the spirit of moving the project forward, the Cardoza family has agreed to a general plan amendment to rezone the entire boundary of the annexation to low-density R1 zoning designation. And that was based on the comments received and staff does agree with those comments. The Cardosas have agreed to it as well, just in the spirit of moving things forward. So with this strategy, staff is diligently working with the applicant to complete these items. The area plan is being revised currently, right now, with the consultant, the applicant's consultant, and the environmental document is being worked on. So based on the amount of work and time that's going to take to revise these documents, staff's anticipating probably about four months or so before this application would come back before any entitlement body. And so it first needs to go before the Planning Commission for a recommendation up to the city council. So I'm anticipating about four months or so before it will get to the Planning Commission and then on to the city council. And Jeff Roberts is here also to speak on the project.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jeff Roberts. I work with Granville Homes in Fresno and our business address is 1396 West Hernan Avenue. But I'm speaking on behalf of all the applications here this evening, and I'll be very brief. First off, I want to concur with what Stacy has stated here for the record this evening. We are in requesting a continuance of items 8A 1 through 5. And I think she's done a very good job outlining about how long that's going to take. There isn't an exact science in predicting the exact number of weeks, but we hope that four months is adequate to do all this work. So we're hitting the reset button on a portion of this application, I think you could say. And a big part of that is the discussion that we have had with the Cardosas. We've been talking with them for over a year, but I think their concurrence with a change to the lower-density residential will make for a better project, one that's a little easier to understand. Certainly, we're revising the area plan with the city's help and we're going to come back with some conceptual designs that I think will help paint a clearer picture of what we're presenting. And a couple other things regarding the SEQA documentation. There's been a new law passed since we've been working on this project. It's called AB 52 and it has to do with consultation with Native American tribes. And it's something that every project that goes through SEQA must do today, including us. So we're going to have to address that in the environmental document, whereas that wasn't, that law wasn't in existence or wasn't in effect till July of this year. We will, this will take a few months. We look, very much look forward to working with your staff and with Stacy and coming back with the revised project before you in a few months. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
A Native American tribe's native to this area?
Native, yes, yes. What happens is there's a state clearinghouse. Every SEQA, Stacy will get very used to this, but every project that requires SEQA, she'll send a notice and they'll respond and say if there are interested tribes, they would be from this list, then we'll find out whether or not there's interest in this specific site or not. In some cases, there is no interest, but in some cases, for instance, like in the foothills, there's a lot of interest. So each site is specific, each site is unique, and, but it is a process that you do have to go through these days.
Okay.
All right.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Well, wait, I think we have a question here.
Okay.
Mrs. Lewis?
No, it's not a question. I just want to thank Mr. Roberts for working so diligently with the Cardoza family. One of the objections that I had was the commercial, the business and the medium density inside this pocket of land that we're looking at for the proposed project. For me personally, I didn't see that it made any sense to have that in there, whether it's custom homes or whether it's regular homes. It just didn't fit the profile of having that kind of mixed use inside a residential area. So I'm happy that you were able to work with the Cardoza family. I'm glad that they were happy to work with you and to bring an agreement forward to let the city move forward, to change that density in there and just make it all R1. It's going to make it for a better project and I'm just happy for that. That was my biggest concern about this project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Silveira.
Okay. Okay.
I too want to thank you guys. I, you know, you guys are taking the advice of the council. I know that myself, I was ready to move forward with the project earlier on, but there was some of my colleagues that had some concerns with the different zonings of the particular pieces of property. So I do appreciate the fact that you guys are, want to work with the city and so that we can end up with a better project. I thought it was a good project before and if we can get, you know, after all this work and hopefully getting these, these zonings changed, that we have an even better project that the whole council can support and get behind. So I do appreciate all the work on it and you guys taking your time, because I do want to get it right, because I think that when this thing gets built out, it's going to be a, it's going to be a tremendous asset to the city of Los Banos. I think that it's definitely filling a need that we, that we have, that we need, you know, we're going to fill this need of someplace that folks can build a custom home. Because if you look around in Los Banos, there's not, there's, whether, and listen, I don't want to say there's none, because there's, in a few of the developments, you might find an empty lot here and an empty lot there. But, you know, there's, I think it's all big, part of a bigger picture. We talk about if we want to be anything other than a bedroom community and we want to bring one day an industrial park here, you're going to have people in upper management that are going to live here or work here, and we want them to live here and spend their dollars here. Well, they want, they want to be able to build a custom home and we don't have anywhere to do that. So I'm looking forward to the next few months and seeing this project move forward. So thank you guys for all your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Do you have other comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to get to that in just a minute. Okay. Stacy, so what would you like to see us do?
I'd ask that city council would continue this item to a date uncertain so that staff can work on the documents and bring that back to you.
Okay. So that would be item A, public hearing 1 through 5. Is that correct?
Yes, please. You do need to open the public hearing for us.
Okay. Good. All right. At this time, the recommendation is to continue this project to a date uncertain, which means that when we have the enough information, then it'll come back to the city council that could be within four months, three to four months. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on item A, 1 through 5. If anyone would like to address any of those items, resolutions or ordinances at this Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level for a recommendation. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to continue item 8A 1 through 5, as previously stated by you, to a date uncertain.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis to continue item 8A 1 through 5 to a date uncertain. All in favor? Aye. All, any opposed? None. Carried. Okay. Okay. Let's go on to item nine, appointment of commission members for the following. 9A, Los Banos Airport Advisory Commission, two vacancies, two, two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2017. Item B, Los Banos Planning Commission, three vacancies, two, two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2017. And item C, Los Banos Tree Commission, three vacancies, two, two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2017. Okay? At this time, I'll take the first one, and it's Los Banos Airport Advisory Committee. And during the interviews, we had excellent applications and we have, we have two people that I'd like to bring forward, and they are Mr. Jim Renshaw and Mr. Dennis Reed. And I see Jim is in the audience tonight. Jim, wave. And I see Jim is in the audience tonight, Jim Wave. And so I'm asking for council approval for the Los Vanos Airport Advisory Commission, Jim Renshaw and Dennis Reed. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the two candidates for the airport commission.
Okay, so a motion by the mayor, second by Lewis to bring those two names forward, as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Los Vanos Planning Commission, we have three vacancies and at this time, I'd like to bring forth the names and we had seven applicants and I'll tell you just quality, quality. Oh, five applicants? One, two, three, four. Oh, sorry. We had five applicants and five quality applicants. It was a tough decision, but at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation after the interviews to bring forth the names of John Cates, John Wave, Refugio Lamas. Refugio, are you here? There he is. Okay. And Eric Limon. So those are my three recommendations and Mr. Silver?
I'd like to second your motion for Eric Limon, John Cates and Refugio Lamas.
Okay, so a motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Silvera. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. And now we have Los Vanos Tree Commission and we have three vacancies and at this time, I'd like to bring forth the names of Colleen Menefee, John Spivak and Rebecca Teigen, all people that have served on this commission, John Spivak serving and Colleen for many, many years. And now Rebecca Teigen, who has served, I believe this is her second term, I think, third? Yeah, second term. And so we're very honored to have them back if, with your approval. So Colleen Menefee, John Spivak and Rebecca Teigen. Mr. Faria?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so a motion by the mayor, second by Faria to bring forth those three names for the Los Vanos Tree Commission. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Okay. Let's go on to item 10, council member agenda requests, to see if there is a majority of consensus to have staff expend time on an issue and to hear it at a future meeting. Well, and it's request from Mayor Valal to see if the city can provide city-sponsored grants to community organizations and public events. I'm sure that I'm not the only one in this council who receives requests for money for different events that are happening in Los Vanos, different community, community projects that are happening. And quite frankly, I think between the four of us that are up here tonight and actually the five of us, we have individuals that have received requests and in the past, we haven't had the money to do it. Because number one, our financial outlook was not that good and now it's looking better. So I thought I'd bring this item forward. But while I was researching the item, it occurred to me that the city council had not had a workshop, and we have one every year concerning the budget, but we never really talked about our reserves. Okay, we have reserves. Our city is doing really well through great financial management. This city has wonderful reserves. But we have what are called dedicated reserves. We have reserves that discretionary reserves and we have operating reserves. So how much do we need to operate this city in reserve? In case a water line breaks or something in the infrastructure needs repairing, how much is enough? Do we know that? So basically, my goal is to get a common understanding of what operating reserves are, where they came from and how much is in there. And how much do we need to keep us safe? How much is dedicated to a specific purpose? And how much can we use at our own discretion? So during the mid-year budget review, the city is going to put together some information and they're going to let us know if we have reserves that can be discretionary reserves. And then if we do, the long-winded answer of this is, or short-winded answer is, I'm pulling this agenda item tonight until we get the information that we need. Then we can go to the public and we can say, all right, we have this much in reserves and the council's going to discuss that. What would the council like to do with those reserves? Would they like to keep those reserves at bay or would they like to program them for some event or activity? And that will be the council's decision. But then every council member will have a fair opportunity to ask questions about our reserves and exactly what they are and what they're going to be used for and what we need. So this way, every two years, when candidates come forward and they say, well, if I were elected, I would use the money for this. You need to know how much money's in there and how much is at your discretion. Then all of us will start out with a level playing field. And then if the council decides that they'd like to program some funds, then what I will do is put this back on the agenda and it'll probably be, what would be a fair assessment? Steve, May?
May.
May?
April, May, June, right in there.
April, May, June, right around there. And after lengthy discussion to find out if there is this pot of money available, then I'll put it on the agenda and we'll see if the council wants to go forward by majority vote to see if we'd like to program some money. So tonight, I'm pulling that item and with that explanation, because I think the public needed an explanation and I'm very confident that when we go through the mid-year budget review, the city staff will tell us exactly what they envision with the reserves and what we need in order to stay safe and if there's any discretionary reserve. Okay, let's go on to item 11, cancellation of regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 16, 2015, due to the holiday season. And the recommendation is to cancel the meeting, as stated. Do I have a motion? Mr. Faria?
I move to cancel regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 16, 2015, due to the holiday season.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by Faria, second by Lewis to cancel the December 16, 2015 meeting due to the holiday season. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. All right, so let's go on to item 11, advisement of public notices. And tonight, we have four reports. Welcome back again.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the first public hearing notice is for a proposed ordinance. This ordinance would be imposing an express ban on marijuana cultivation, marijuana processing, marijuana delivery and dispensaries in the city of Los Vanos. The second item is a conditional use permit and a site plan for Comcast and their request is for the development of a 1,900 square foot telecommunication head-in facility. This would be located at 604 Texas Avenue in the Professional Office Zoning District. The third public hearing notice is for a conditional use permit for Walmart. This is a type 86 alcohol license that they're requesting. This is for the instructional tasting of alcoholic beverages on-site at 1575 West Pacheco Boulevard. And then the last public hearing notice is another conditional use permit and this is for Aqua Entertainment Center, which is the future Bowling Alley Entertainment Center located at 923 West Pacheco. They're requesting a type 40 alcohol license, which is strictly for the on-sale of beer. And those are going to be presented on Wednesday, December 9, 2015, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers before the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any questions about the reports? Okay. At this time, I'd like to go back to Director Maloney and we have some additional information on the commissions talking about parks and recreation. Director Maloney?
I just wanted to go back to that commission member appointment item because with the appointment to the Planning Commission, you're creating extra vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I just wanted Public Works Director to explain the process now going forward so that you have a clear understanding.
Oh, I guess we took from one to from another, huh? Okay.
Sorry, Mark.
That's okay. Currently with the new appointments, we have one out of five seats occupied on the Parks and Recreation Commission and we advertised, I believe, for two and we got no applications. So I suggest we do a couple of months more advertising on the website and then we will revisit the existence of this commission, whether it's long-term or we just have a hiatus from it. But let's see if we can get some people to apply online. It'll just be an online advertising for a couple of months and we will have to cancel those meetings due to lack of a quorum. This has been our hardest commission to fill, so.
Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you. Council, is that okay with you? Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of easy ones. Stacy, welcome back. You were missed. I want to thank Tammy Smith, she's a resident in Los Vanos. She brought a wreath up that's out front by the memorial and she stopped by last year. I didn't get a chance to thank her last year, but she stopped by again this week with another one, so we'll make up for it or thank you twice. Congratulations to Sergeant Seha. He is an absolute rock star. He is everything that you hear about. He is really good at what he does and I'm just thrilled that he was selected. We did have a list of really talented candidates and you hear that all the time, but we do and Jesse just really, he just stood out, so good for him. And the last thing I wanted to say is, I don't get this very often, but I do hear it once in a while and it's when people say there really isn't much to do in Los Vanos. And if you are here tonight and were paying attention at all, there's all kinds of events between the parades, the breakfasts, the lunches, the dinners. So I really don't want to hear anyone say there isn't a whole lot to do because there is, especially this time of year. I mean, it's a full calendar, so I'm really impressed with the organizations and keep doing what you're doing because there's really good people out there that are coming to your events and they're taking advantage of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to city council member reports and tonight, we'll start with Mr. Silver.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I too want to welcome Stacy back. Yesterday was her first day back, so congratulations again on the baby and I'm sure it was a little bittersweet coming back to work, but I'm sure Sandra's probably one of the happiest people at City Hall right now. Also, I would like to congratulate Sergeant Seha on being awarded the Los Vanos City Employee of the Year. Then a couple of things that were mentioned earlier, the Kiwanis Dinner on Christmas Eve. I usually try to make it out there on the 24th in the morning to help them cook the chicken. They have an amazing group of people that come and volunteer for that and it's the 32nd annual, so keep up the good work on that. And they do accept donations if anybody wants to help out with that. Also, don't forget Breakfast with Santa is coming up on this Saturday. It's seven bucks pre-sale and 10 bucks at the door. And then the last thing is, is the Christmas parade is this Friday. So I plan on being there and I hope to see you guys all out there. So I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and we'll see you guys in the new year.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Faria.
Thanks. I'd like to start off with a request on code enforcement. We've had really good success with education on water use. I'm wondering if we could do an education program with code enforcement, get flyers out to the people and say, look, it's not okay to have four cars on your lawn. It's not okay to rebuild your truck on the roof of your house. Just let people know what is and what is not allowed in the code. And I think that a lot of people just don't know. You know, it's not okay to have a canvas garage. And I think if we educate the people, it'll, those that don't know will learn those that may be kind of not sure, they're going to be sure. And I don't know if we need a council member, a general request for this or it's just something staff wants to pursue, however you want to take that up.
I think this is a really good idea. We all drive around, we all see these obvious violations. Code enforcement has been doing a great job. If you have specifics, yes, we can hit those, but I think the idea of kind of giving everyone a quick, you know, code enforcement 101 course on what you can and can't do is probably a really good idea. So I don't think we need a request on this one. I think we could take this one. I'll work with, I already talked to Chief Breezy a little bit about it. He's got some ideas, so we'll get started. But I do think it's a really good idea because a lot of people just don't know what kind of what the rules are, what they can and can't do. Next thing you know, it looks pretty rough out there. So I think it's a very good idea.
Thank you. So we'll just do it then?
Yes.
Okay.
Groovy. And we've got lots to do and the holiday season in Los Vanos, Christmas season, tomorrow night downtown, the Españas. And then Friday night, the big Santa Claus parade, which seems to get bigger and bigger every year. We'll be singing carols at the end of that. Of course, Breakfast with Santa. And then the afternoon Makers Market is going to be running all day Saturday at the Arts Center. High School Choir is going to be providing some entertainment there at 1:00. It's a wonderful room. That Arts Center is just a beautiful, beautiful place and all these crafts and handmade stuff. If you want to buy some handmade, unique gifts, probably a good place to do it, sponsored by the Arts Council. And so it is a lot of fun. Reminder, Bethel Gospel Trio, the Melody Boys, December 13 at Bethel Church, get some gospel. If you haven't heard Southern gospel music, it's tight harmonies and it's very, very, it's fun to listen to and it's very uplifting. Let's see, Kiwanis has already been mentioned. Just Serve, Mr. Doons brought forth a very interesting website to look up, maybe Google it up, Just Serve for those nonprofits. Take advantage of everything we can do to help our people. So thanks again and have a wonderful Christmas holiday season, New Year's and enjoy the times.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, welcome back. I know you miss your baby, but I know your baby's in good hands. And I'd also like to congratulate Sergeant Seha on being the Employee of the Year. He's an excellent officer and he wears more than one hat other than just code enforcement and he does excellent in every category that he's worked in. I want to congratulate all the new appointees to the various commissions. I know that you all will do a wonderful job for the city and that you'll be mindful of the direction that we're trying to take this city in, especially the Planning Commission. It's a very important catalyst and the arm to this city council. So thank you all for stepping forward and volunteering your time and offering to help take care of us and as well as our airport. That's a very important commission as well. And with that, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and please be safe. We want to see everybody return. And thank you for viewing out there, our viewing audience this evening for city council and thank you for those who attended our meeting. And we had a great open house this evening before city council. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, with that intro, I am going to now, please, I don't want to forget this, to remember to thank the three ladies who made this event possible this evening. And they are Lucy Maloney, Jan Asusa and Jennifer Matthews for all the great food that was put out tonight and punch and coffee and thank you. Lucy, would you please tell the other two thank you so much for what they've done? And it's always a great event every year. So, and the Employee of the Year, Jesse and all the nominees, thank you so much for staying and serving our city. All the events have been mentioned. Bertha, can I ask, is there a charge for tomorrow night to downtown? Are there tickets or anything?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. But it's a free event to go from store to store. Would you please, at some time in the near future, I'd like to get a list of the merchants who participate and do this because they pay for the food themselves, they do all these things. There's no, there's nothing that the merchants make other than to see the joy of having people come downtown, maybe buy something from their stores, but then to have another gathering for the townspeople and it's always a nice event. for the townspeople, and it's always a nice event. And I'd like to recognize those merchants who, year after year, do this out of the goodness of their heart. And maybe we could have them come to a city council meeting, and then they can know who their local merchants are, if that's okay. So also, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you after the first of the year. The events that are coming up, and I agree with our city manager, there are a lot of things to do, you just have to find them, and you have to look. There is a community calendar. That community calendar is through the Chamber of Commerce. If you have an event, please place your event on that city calendar. Then you'll know, and you'll be able to go to it and see what events are happening in Los Vanos week after week. And believe me, this is a town that feeds people every week. So, and great food. There are a lot of activities out there, and I was happy to hear about this justserve.org, where if someone has an event, a charitable event, and they need volunteers, or if someone just needs a ride to a doctor's appointment, they have a website now where you can go and volunteer your time if you'd like to. The volunteerism in this community is tremendous. It always has been since I was a kid, and it just gets stronger and stronger with the people who move here. This is a good community. It's a great community. Those who don't want to be part of a great community, well, there are other communities that you can go to. So with that, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a very safe Christmas, a very safe New Years, and we'll see you after the first of the year. And is there anything else, Mr. Attorney? Good? Okay. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:05.